City councillors, ladies and gentlemen, the Lord Provost.
Good evening everyone and welcome, I hope you're all well, this is City Council. Roger please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the Chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the Councillor's Code of Conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Aye. I will now take a roll call for the minute. And I would ask if members would confirm they are present when I call their names. Lord Provost.
Present.
councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
councillor Anderson.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
Present.
councillor Elnackla.
Present.
councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
councillor Hunter.
Good evening, present.
councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
councillor Short.
I'm here, thank you.
councillor Smith.
I'm here.
councillor Tolland.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
councillor Trugshank.
Present.
Thank you councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, present.
councillor McHugh.
Present.
councillor McIrvin.
Present.
councillor Malone.
I'm here.
councillor Scullen.
Evening, present.
councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
councillor Creighton.
I'm here.
councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Yeah, that concludes the roll call.
Thank you Willie, Roger please.
Lord Provost, members of the council, there are two items of business this evening. First of all, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Is it agreed? Thank you.
The second item is general business, appointments to outside bodies. In accordance with the rules on politically balanced appointments, the following positions fall to be filled by members of the administration group. CMIS, Board of Management East, Business Gateway Tayside Board and Business Gateway National Board. Lord Provost Bailey Dawson wishes to speak.
Thank you Bailey Dawson, if you could provide information on said bodies, thank you.
Thanks, Lord Provost. Just to advise with regards to CMIS, it will be councillor Hunter. But we'll come back to officers separately with regards to Business Gateway Tayside Board and the Business Gateway National Board, so that will be within due course.
Thank you Bailey Dawson. Are there any other nominations for these posts? I see nothing there for, is this agreed? Thank you. Fleming Trusts.
Yes, thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the City Council. Would you please remain in the Chair for the meeting of Dundee City Council as Fleming Trust fees? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, then it takes you onto item two, tender received by Head of Housing and Construction. The council was asked to agree to accept the offer as recommended.
Lord Provost, apologies, I couldn't type fast enough to get Willie's attention. I will have to declare a non-financial non-financial interest in this item as OVO are my employer.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Roger.
There are two questions, Lord Provost. Councillor Flynn followed by Bailey Wright.
Thank you councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks, Lord Provost. I'd just like to say I welcome this report. I think it's great to see you are continuing to do the energy efficiency to help residents in the city meet the challenges of energy costs and heating costs across the city itself. And I've been, even today, at the surgery, residents were asking when this was actually happening. So they'll be delighted if it's passed tonight to see the progress and the installation of the EWI in the near future. So I just say I welcome the report and look forward to seeing that actually take place. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Flynn, and Bailey Wright please.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously welcome this report as well, as probably the four elected members do, because this area has been waiting for some time to actually have some form of cladding. But the question I would want to ask is, I had heard that it was likely to be internal cladding and then I was told it was going to be external cladding. I was just wondering why we've sort of changed back to being external cladding, bearing in mind some of the things that have happened there. Is there a difference in the price or... I don't know, maybe if I could get that question answered.
Thank you for your question, Bailey Wright. Mrs. Rline, are you able to come in please?
Thank you, Lord Provost. And can I ask Louise Butcher, who's the Head of Housing and Construction, just to answer Bailey Wright's question?
Certainly, no problem.
Of course, and thank you for the question. And I'm not sure Bailey Wright, where your information has come from in terms of internal wall insulation. I would just advise that the programme and plan for Fleming Trust and Fleming Gardens has been with a focus on external wall insulation. There's been a period of redesign that we've been undertaking, hence what's allowed us to get to this point in time. But it is external wall and that has been the original plan, as referenced in the previous committee report that came forward for this.
Well, well, thanks for clarifying that. But I don't know, could you answer the question or maybe it's not a question you can answer at the moment? Is there a difference in the price between external and internal?
Yep, so we haven't explored internal wall insulation as a solution at Fleming Gardens or Trust properties. We've explored external wall, which we've worked with colleagues in city development as the most appropriate solution to this type of build.
Okay, thank, thank you anyway.
Thanks, thank you for your question, thank you for your response. Is this agreed? Actually, no other hands up, so that's the business, that's agreed. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, Lord Provost. The next committee is the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee.
No, I'd like to welcome people to the first meeting of the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee. I'll ask Elaine to take us through the agenda. Thank you convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations? I can see no one expressing a declaration, Elaine, so I think we'll take that as none. Thank you. There being no declarations. Item two, purchase of green waste shredder at Riverside Composting Facility. So this item is essentially an agenda note. All of you will know that the council operates brown bin curbside collections as well as offering garden waste recycling at our recycling centres. All of the waste undergoes a forty day composting process at Riverside, which requires initial shredding. We currently hire a shredder at Riverside and this purchase will enable us to generate a revenue saving as well as giving us greater control and flexibility over what we do. Following an open tender notice, bids were evaluated in July on the basis of price, product specification, delivery, service, warranty and spare parts. And the agenda note seeks approval to accept the bid by Blue Machinery Scotland Limited to provide a shredder at a price of three hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty pounds. Your approval is further sought for the purchase of a Caterpillar tract unit in the sum of a hundred and twelve thousand pounds and this total cost of four hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and fifty can be met from within the tackling climate change budget within the capital plan. As well as contributing a fifty grand a year revenue saving, it will also support our endeavours to reach net zero as composting the waste is far better than sending it to landfill. Are people happy to accept this tender? I see no one dissenting. Oh, sorry.
councillor Creighton, which is the speed convener.
councillor Creighton, sorry.
No worries at all, and I'm going to be cheeky and I have a question and a comment. My comment is just, no, this is great news. Me and Bailey McPherson have long argued that it just is best for the department to have its own shredder rather than hiring it out for the department and also financially it just totally makes sense. And hopefully it will also improve the situation in relation to the smell. We've had a lot of smell complaints regarding the composting. And my question is just regarding as to officers, just asking for the assurance that the situation will be closely monitored about odor complaints and going forward to ensure that we do reduce this with our own equipment.
Yeah, my understanding is that having our own machine will give us that flexibility and enable us to manage the composting in order to reduce the odor, but I'll bring in Mr. Boyle to reassure you on that point.
Thanks convener, thanks councillor Creighton for the positive confirmation. Yeah, the whole idea about this is we know going back several years has been an issue with odor, even hiring a plant, but this gives us a complete flexibility to only use a plant when we need to use it. And I foresee there being, that going down well with residents and that there have been odor complaints in the past.
Thank you.
Okay. So that is approved. Elaine, we have the next item. Item three, contract for procurement framework to manage ash dieback, and you have the report before you. So as members know, ash dieback is one of the most significant tree diseases to affect broadleaf trees since Dutch Delm sees around sixty years ago. Over the next two decades, about ninety percent of the ash trees in Scotland will be affected. And as the trees reach stage four of the disease, the infected trees cause significant health and safety risks both to the public and to the staff who are having to manage the trees. Our environment forestry team have been working flat out to survey the ash population across the city, particularly those in high risk locations and to ensure that all affected trees are monitored and where necessary removed. They're also working to secure arboretal apprenticeships to assist with the work, but the scale, pace and skill requirements of the necessary work now require us to also seek additional support from skilled and experienced contractors. The report seeks your approval to commence a regulated procurement exercise carried out in compliance with the Public Contracts Scotland Regulations two thousand and fifteen and the details of the procurement process are in the report. The report also seeks approval to delegate authority to the Executive Director of Corporate Services to award contracts for this work. I can see that we have questions. I'll take Bailey McPherson first.
Thanks convener. I have no issue with what's being proposed tonight, but I do have a question for either the Chief Executive or Director of Corporate Services in relation to the way in which the procurement is being put forward for this particular report before us tonight. As members will be aware, over a long period of time, I've raised with the Chief Executive at committee and at group leader meetings regarding transparency with tenders where procurement frameworks are being used. My issue has always been that a member of the public should be able to see that best value is being obtained and I've not been particularly convinced that the way in which that has been illuminated, shall we say, during some committee reports has been maybe as good as it could be. Now, in this particular case, and to be fair, in a positive, there's quite a degree of detail about, if you like, tender evaluation methodology, which I think is a positive. But nonetheless, it does, all it does is commit, give us basically a delegation to the Executive Director of Corporate Services to effectively spend up to a certain amount of money. I think it's four hundred thousand pounds from my memory in reading the report. My question really is for either, as I say, the Chief Executive or Director of Corporate Services, is this just, is this particular way we're doing this in this particular case purely because it's an ongoing situation with regard to ash dieback and it will be going over a period of time and this is perhaps the most efficient manner in which to actually tender for works? What I would like to know is, is this the method being for procurement framework tenders? Is this the intended method going forward? Because I've got a concern where frankly, the public do not see what the actual tendered amount is and we do not actually make that decision with regard to the tendered amount. So I would, and I would just really like to know from the Chief Executive where he's got to in relation to the issues that I've raised, which he has given me assurances are being looked into in relation to the way in which the transparency, if you like, of the way in which we put in committee reports to ensure best value is evidenced if our procurement frameworks are used.
Thank you very much Bailey McPherson. I shared your concern about transparency and asked a number of those questions myself. My understanding is it's up to four hundred thousand and part of the reason why we're adopting this approach is because it's work over a period of time and it needs to be dealt with swiftly. But I will bring in, I can see that Mr. Emmett has his hand up, so I'll bring in Mr. Emmett to answer your question directly.
Thank you convener and Bailey McPherson. So first of all, this is a report in the new style, which is intended to bring before you the procurement route before we start. So you've got the opportunity to ask these types of questions. So in relation to this specific project, you'll recall, we set money aside last year to deal with the challenge of this and this is the procurement of that. And you'll see in section five of the report, it sets out that we've sought some information from the market to see how it's going to respond and we're looking at using an open procedure through Public Contracts Scotland. So we're trying to set out for you at the beginning of each procurement process, the routes that we're intending to follow so that you've got, you've got sight of that. I don't know if Mr. Thompson wants to add anything on this detail of the procurement, convener.
Mr. Thompson, do you wish to come in?
Yeah, I'm happy to do so. So just not so much in respects, in respect of the procurement exercise, but really just in terms of the points that Bailey McPherson raises in respect of transparency. It was just to confirm, as with all regulated procurement exercises, there's a requirement for us to report the outcome of these exercises back to committee on an annual basis. So every regulated procurement exercise that's awarded, even if it's delegated officers to sign their contract, will be reported back to committee.
Thanks very much for that. I get all that. My fundamental question though is, when that's reported back to committee, are we able to absolutely evidence that we have obtained best value? Because that, that is the crucial part of it. And also the second part of my follow-up is, I take it is not the case that we're going to delegate authority to officers in all cases where we have a procurement framework being used. Because again, I think that would be effectively taking the actual decision-making on the the physical amount that is being paid away from elected people and handing it to officers.
Thank you.
You're on mute, convener.
Sorry, thank you Bailey McPherson. I'll come back to Mr. Thompson on the point about best value and whether this is, whether delegating authority will be the route we always choose, which I don't think it will be, but Mr. Thompson.
So thank you convener and thanks Bailey McPherson again for the question. So just to confirm, it's not the intention for every contract that's awarded to be delegated to officers. It would only be any significant contracts, for example, those that were in excess of a million pounds would have to come back to members to be agreed upon. In terms of the exercise itself though, it would be the case that each individual procurement would be considered on merit and the appropriate solution would be put forward in terms of what officers were recommending, what the most appropriate procurement route would be. For this particular route, there isn't an existing framework in place. So what we're recommending is to go out and establish a framework that can allow us to appoint contractors to undertake this work where we don't have the provision to do so within our own resource.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you Bailey McPherson. I'll bring in councillor Shears.
Thanks convener. On the ninth of January, when this first came to place, the Labour Group moved an amendment requesting the Chief Executive write to the Scottish Government for assistance with funding. I've not seen any response to that or any mention of Scottish Government assistance with the funding. So just wondering if the Chief Executive could update us if he received a response from the Scottish Government on that.
My, my understanding councillor Shears is that negotiations would be between COSLA and the Scottish Government, but I'll bring in Mr. Boyle to confirm the up-to-date position.
Thanks convener, thanks councillor Shears. Yeah, that is indeed my understanding of the position that it's one of these issues, environmental issues of which there are many that are discussed between COSLA and the Scottish Government directly.
Thank you.
Bailey Keenan.
So can I go back on to councillor Shears' question there? If it was a request made to council and that was agreed, then why was no action taken and how is there no better response than, you know, COSLA will be dealing with that? If council were to write to a minister or the chief exec was to write to a minister, surely we would expect a response? And has the letter gone? So can we clear that up before I ask my particular question?
Bailey Keenan, I will check with officers. I don't know whether that would be the Chief Executive or whether Mr. Boyle can deal with that.
Yes, thanks convener. I'm happy to come in on that response. Any instruction from council or committee for me to write to any agency or minister is actioned. I don't have the specific details that are under response in front of me right now, but I'm happy to follow that up after committee and I've had the opportunity to confirm whether the response is set. Members will be aware that the usual process is when I receive the response, it's circulated to all twenty-nine members.
Thanks for clearing that. My question convener was in relation to your opening remarks regarding the health and safety and at a certain stage, that risk becomes much higher. That concerns me and obviously concerns me about the levels of mitigation that we would have in place for our own staff and the members of the public. So perhaps an officer could elaborate on perhaps what was your comment?
I'm happy to bring in Mr. Boyle at this point. I definitely got statistics on the number of trees that have been surveyed and which stages they're at and the ones that have been dealt with so far. But certainly the, the type of procedure that has to be undertaken means that that we have to bring in specialist contractors in addition to our own staff, but Mr. Boyle, you can explain the rest.
I'm aware of there will be a potential risk in...
Sorry, Bailey Keenan, you're on mute.
Sorry convener. You know, I'm aware that there will be an extreme risk in the removal of any trees and that, you know, we'll have a team with risk assessments in place of that. You just seem to suggest that with these trees, there is much, a much greater risk. So I'm looking to understand what that greater risk is and how we best met against that for the public. So obviously officers will hopefully be able to give that.
Yeah, and the greater risk is when they reach stage four, so much of the work is to do with surveying and monitoring the trees to deal with them before they get to that stage. But I'll bring in Mr. Boyle.
Thanks convener, thanks Bailey Keenan. I can give some reassurance, first of all, that there are four stages, as the convener points out. The categorisation that comes from Scottish Forestry is that this four stages, stage one, two, three and four, stage four being the most severe. We have removed seventy-nine of the stage four trees already. We did that over the last winter period and we've identified a further one hundred and seventy-two. So I think to directly try and respond to what Bailey Keenan's asking about, this is about capacity. So we don't have the sufficient capacity to deal with the tree management issues we've got just now in terms of risk mitigation. And ongoing risk analysis tells us we need to bring in this additional resource. There is a specific issue with ash dieback where it does not behave, the trees structurally don't behave like normal trees that are dying, as it were. There is specific issues where we can't actually climb up them, for example. So there's a whole range of dynamics around the specific management of ash dieback, which require a specialist cover. We've managed to deal with problems so far. We're not resting on the laurels and we've got two and a half thousand ash trees that we've surveyed so far at various stages. As I said, one hundred and seventy-two currently stage four. Another dynamic we have with ash diseases, it's so unpredictable that a stage two, currently we have five hundred and fifty, could become stage four within six months. We'll have to really keep a tight eye on this, but we have managed to deal with all the one specific which is now that were causing concerns and that was the ones, for example, near schools, near residential properties. We've dealt with them and we're currently dealing with the rest of them as we speak. Thanks convener.
Thank you. So we are basically seeking approval from the committee to commence this procurement process as quickly as possible and deal with the issues at hand. Are people happy to proceed on the basis? Can't see any dissent, but I can see that councillor Lynn has a question. Sorry councillor Lynn.
Do you know what, I'm actually not sure it's, it's relevant in the procurement process because it isn't. But I would just ask that, we could maybe look at replanting trees due to the loss of so many beautiful ash trees, one of which I can see at my window just now in Baxter Park. So that's all. It's not really relevant to procurement, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we agree the procurement process and replanting is something we will definitely come back to. Thank you. Elaine, can we go on to the next item? Item four, Environmental Improvement Works two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. This is for approval. This report seeks your approval for six contracts for environmental improvements amounting to over two hundred and forty-four thousand pounds. Gate replacements, improvement in cemeteries, roundabout improvements, improvements at Camperdown with fencing and the installation of an adventure trail in the East End. These projects have all been developed in consultation with the communities, teams and local groups. I can see that we have some questions, so I'll bring in councillor Coleman first.
Thank you convener. The amount being spent on campground development plan at just under thirty thousand welts welcome in relation to security and stop and fly tipping, it seems rather minor in comparison to the complaint that I'm continually getting from constituents. That is the really sad state of the former golf course, which has frankly been left to go to raccoon. Can officers assure me about the progress with the proposal with amenity hospitality for a replacement nine hole course, please?
Mr. Boyle may be able to respond to that, although it might not be something he has the information with him tonight on.
Could I suggest Robyn Presswood answer this, convener?
Right, Mr. Presswood.
Chair, I'm happy to do so. I would remind members that the previous report referred to was a confidential item and therefore I would encourage members not to reference the specific companies involved nor the nature of the commercial transaction. Regrettably, it has not been possible to pursue that opportunity. There's a number of specific challenges around development in Camperdown, one of which is the proximity of the house itself and that places restrictions upon the type of development that can take place there. Obviously, as a grade A listed building, we're required to consult Historic Environment Scotland on any development within the park and that's been a factor in this position. We continue to market the golf course for private sector partners. I share the view that it's an exceptional asset. I share the view that it's an exceptional asset and I do hope that now post pandemic, as confidence comes back into the leisure sector, we can identify a private sector partner to take the course on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Presswood. And perhaps that's a conversation you could also carry on offline, councillor Coleman.
Yes, I was going to suggest, Convenor.
Can I bring in councillor Duncan?
Thanks, Convenor. Just a quick question. It's good to see that there's going to be soft closing gates installed at the play parks at Village Street and Abercrombie Street. It was actually at the latter location today and the two existing gates, as is quite common, are both wide open, meaning that kids can run out and dogs can run in sort of thing. My question for to officers, I'm just seeking a bit of clarification. When you say soft closing, is that the same as automatic closing? That's, that's one question. The second question would be, has there been any consideration given to putting in a button to enable wheelchair bound people to actually open these, open and close these gates?
Okay, I'll ask officers to respond to those technical questions. Mr Boyle?
Aye, it's good to be on. Thanks councillor Duncan. Yeah, this is actually phase three of this play gate replacement. My understanding is they're fully accessible.
Okay, no, I'm just glad for that qualification because I just thought if it had not been addressed, it's a question that we'd be bound to be coming up in future. So thanks for that.
Thank you. And I have Bailey McPherson, who wishes to make a comment.
Yeah, my comments really about the, the response from Mr Presswood when he indicated that members shouldn't say anything in relation to a confidential item. And I would just point out that the name of the company, which sadly is not going forward, actually was in the public domain. I can send them the link for the report that appeared in the Courier, frankly. So I don't, you know, I think in defence of my colleague, he didn't allude to anything that was in a confidential report. He mentioned something that was already in the public domain.
Thank you for that clarification, Bailey McPherson. Do I take it that people are happy to accept these tenders for this work to go ahead? Can see no dissent, so we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Convenor. Item five, policy for provision of memorial benches, plaques and trees in public parks, open spaces and cemeteries. And you have the report before you.
Okay. Now, neighbourhood services staff have always responded to requests from members of the public who wish to place memorial benches and plaques and trees within public spaces. And although there's no legislative requirement for us to do so, the team also maintain the benches and the trees thereafter. Officers have now undertaken an audit of all the benches and trees that we have across the city and they've drafted a comprehensive policy paper which will ensure there's consistent treatment of approaches to requests from the public going ahead. It will also ensure that records and sighting of seating and trees is improved. You're being asked to simply note the terms of this proposed policy as detailed in appendix one. I can see that there are two questions at this point, so I'll bring in councillor Curdell.
Thank you, Convenor. It's just a little bit of clarity, if I may. Should a bench get to the end of its shelf life and requires replacement, do we as a department write to the families to let them know that bench requires replacing? Because I would imagine it might be upsetting for a family to turn up expecting to see something and it's no longer there for very good reasons, but just ensure we are in communication with families when that occasion arises.
Thank you, councillor Curdell. Mr Boyle?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks councillor Curdell. Yeah, that's certainly the intention going forward. Unfortunately, historically, we have a large amount of these benches across the city with various periods of heritage, some going back 60, 70 and more years. So we don't always hold records as part of our asset management plan going forward. We'll certainly be holding records of all the new ones that we get, as well as some of the existing ones we have in a, a database within the service. So the idea is, of course, that we would be contacting those who had donated those benches in the future.
Thank you. Your understanding that the audit will have helped you improve all your records and this will certainly improve them going forwards. So are people happy to note the terms of this policy? Yes, and next.
Convenor, actually.
Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor.
That's okay. No, it's okay. He's easily done. Okay, just a couple of observations first. I mean, certainly over the years, I get a number of requests about either benches or memorial plaques in my ward. I'm, I'm sure we all do. So it's good to actually see this coming to committee. I'm just a wee bit, you know, disappointed it couldn't have been done sooner to give us all a bit of clarity about times, time scales and stuff involved. The other, the other one is, I noticed that on the annex fee, it indicates that a bench, a tree or the plaque will be in place four months after payment. My personal reaction to that is that that's quite a bit of time for someone to wait. I'm just wondering if we couldn't do a bit quicker than that. The only other thing that I'd like to add as well is that the great many benches and memorial plaques, certainly in the ferry, I'm not speaking for anywhere else, but a lot of them are not in great condition. They're covered in salt spray. People complain that they're rusty, which may not actually be the case actually. But I mean, it is really a plea that they can be looked after, you know, a little bit better, given that these are memorials. And one actually quite moving complaint I heard recently was the benches at Balmosi have just been unceremonious, we piled high in the contractor's compound. And it just strikes me that that's, you know, not very considerate.
And so three questions about the time lag between payment and delivery about maintenance of existing benches and the last comment, Mr Boyle?
Thanks very much, Convenor. Thanks councillor Duncan. Yeah, it's taken us a bit of time to put this policy together because it is really complex and it's also really important. We paid you deference and sensitivity to the families who quite often look to have these benches put in at difficult times. And, and you know, the time lag really represents the amount of time it takes from us being able to process this and order and then deliver and install. We can't just do that automatically. This is one of the services the council still provides. It's over and above our statutory responsibilities. So we do it as a courtesy. And it mentions within the policy that this, you know, when people enter into this agreement, then they're really donating a gift to the city. Yeah, we definitely take on board councillor Duncan's point, but we have got a finite resource to be able to provide this and it does generally take two or three months. So we've got to manage expectations with those who are seeking these benches. Most of the families fully understand it takes a period of time to do that. And I suppose going forward, the whole idea is to have consistency to ensure we can turn this around more quickly. So I definitely take on board councillor Duncan's point. In terms of the maintenance of the benches, we are moving towards a range of benches in the appropriate locations. If you think, for, for example, of the benches that have just been put in along Douglas Terrace, they're reinforced plastic, long term, don't require any maintenance other than the wipe down. Similarly, the Albany Trivial or Steel benches we see throughout the city, they're powder coated, where again, they should just need a wipe down, the algae and, and various moles that sometimes gathers on them can periodically be removed rather than a commitment to painting. But the older benches do need time and there is a kind of idea that at some point we will get to face replacement of them in the future. But I take on board the points that councillor Duncan has made. Thank you.
And, and Mr Boyle, just the last comment. I don't know if you want to get back to councillor Duncan on the point about the benches that he reported at the end outside the committee meeting.
Forgive me, Convenor. I, I did, I know at that point that councillor Duncan's made and I'll follow that up internally.
Okay, I'd, I'd be grateful for that because I did actually raise it with officers, but as far as I'm aware, I've not heard a response. So thanks, Mr Boyle.
Thank you. And so we note the terms of that policy paper. Can we move on to the next item?
Item six, Take Pride in Your City campaign.
So pages 37 to 43 of your packs give you a comprehensive report on the number of actions completed as part of the Take Pride in Your City campaign over the last 12 months. The achievements are laudable and I would like this opportunity to thank the team in neighbourhood services, along with the hundreds of volunteers who worked so hard all year round to make the city look its best. I know that we had judging in the last couple of weeks, which is always nerve wracking, but hopefully we will be able to sustain the level of awards that we achieved last year. So this, this report is for noting at this point, but I am going to take questions. I can see that councillor Scullen has a question.
Thank you. It's two quick questions, if that's okay. And the first one is, is there any information that's been brought forward on what the businesses think about the waste project? Because it states that there's been engagement. And within that subgroup that's headed by environment, what's the attendance been like and uptake from businesses? And my second question is, is there any feedback from the Think Thursday project? And if so, when will that be available?
Okay, thank you councillor Scullen. So these are basically to do with the, the business side of the, the management. So I think I'd bring in Mr Presswood. Would that be correct? Yeah, thank you.
Many thanks, Chair. I, I don't have a detailed debrief on Think Thursday, but I'll certainly make sure that's available to councillor Scullen and other elected members as soon as possible. And in terms of liaison with the business community about the, the, the change in bins, I think the first point I would make is it appears to have been a success. The, there's a substantial improvement in the environment within the city centres. We've reduced the number of Euro bins. And broadly, as far as I am aware, with one or two exceptions, there's been a fairly ready consensus achieved with the businesses around that change. And so there's been detailed engagement with individual businesses and also where possible, engagement through various different groups. So I think overall a positive success. I think members may have had approaches over the past year from individual businesses, but I think we've now achieved a consensus and I'm very pleased about what we've achieved. And perhaps just to explain the reason that Tony and Elaine and their team don't lead on this, separate regulatory powers, because Tony is a provider of waste services, it was felt more appropriate for city development to, to lead on this and to, to ensure a separation between the regulator and the delivery partner.
Thank you, Mr Presswood. That fine councillor Scullen?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. It'd be good to hear about the Think Thursdays.
Think Thursday.
Yeah, perfect.
Take those notes. And so we're basically noting the contents of that report. I believe that is the business for this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. The next committee is the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Mr Many. I think that last item we transition seamlessly across. So welcome to the first of the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committees. Elaine, can you take us through the business, please?
Thank you, Convenor. Item one, it's declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Councillor Crichton?
Yes, thank you, Convenor. A close family member has written item five, so I shall not take part in that item.
Thank you for that. I don't see any other. Apologies, I'm muted myself. Don't see any other declarations, but councillor Finnegan, you have a question on item four? Do you want to raise that at the time or?
Yeah, no, you place that when you get there.
Okay, thank you councillor Finnegan. Can you move us on, please, then, Elaine?
Thank you, Convenor. Item two, Dundee City Council, Summerfield Gardens, Dundee, Stopping Our Porter, 2022.
I think this is fairly self explanatory. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Give it a minute, but I'm not seeing anything. Can this item be agreed, please? See no dissent, so I'll take that one as agreed. Thank you. Moving on then, please.
Thank you. Item three, Civic Government Scotland Act 1982, street names, new residential development at Picaro Mall, Kelly's Road, Dundee.
Similarly, fairly self explanatory and the consultation was carried out in 17th of May, 2023, and 2nd of June, 2023 for a new street name at the above location. Does anyone have any comments regarding the new street name proposed, Kelly's Muse? Can't see any comments in the chat, so can I take that as agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreed then, please. Moving on then, please, Elaine.
Item four, annual road safety and 20 mile an hour pro des report. You have the report before you.
So this item provides a summary of progress towards national road casualty reduction targets and seeks approval of a programme of road safety improvements. The report also provides details of pedestrian crossing priority reevaluation and updates committed on progress of the 20 mile per hour zones. We already have the question in for councillor Finnegan, so councillor Finnegan, I'll take you first, please.
Thank you. That is welcome to the 20 mile an hour speed restrictions in across Dundee and especially in the North East, as you would agree, we get a lot of mail about that. I would just a question regarding 4.5b of the enforcement. It does say there's significant resources devoted to enforcing the speed limit. However, when I'm reading the paragraph, there is mitigation there for like seat belts and inappropriate parking, but only identifies two safety cameras. I'm just wondering if you could, if somebody could elaborate on the significant resources for enforcing the speed limits. How will it be monitored? How will it be enforced? And I'm sure the signage itself, the majority of the Dundee drivers will be pay heed to that, but what happens if they don't? How are we moving forward with that?
I think enforcement of speed limits is a police matter, but I'll let Mr McNorton come in and answer that one, please, Mr McNorton.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. Thank you for the question. It's Police Scotland are responsible for enforcement of speed limits as it's a road traffic violation. In terms of monitoring, we do undertake monitoring of reports of inappropriate speeding and we share that information with partners, including Police Scotland and the Safety Camera Partnership to inform them on their decision making. When we're selecting 20 mile an hour zones, we, we do so in mind of the, the resourcing that Police Scotland have available for tackling residential roads as well. And we try and do it in areas where it's not going to place an unfeasible burden on their resources that they have for these activities.
Thank you, Mr McNorton. Does that answer your question, councillor Finnegan?
Well, I'm just, so what, one more question. What are the significant resources devoted to enforcing speed limits then?
Yeah, if I can answer that.
Yeah, please, Mr McNorton.
Yeah, we, we are referring to Police Scotland. Again, they do have a dedicated road traffic policing unit. And a big part of that is in addition to responding to, to road traffic incidents and so forth. Speeding does form part of that programme of work. So it's the Police Scotland programme or resources that we're referring to there.
Thank you. Bailey Scott, I think you're next.
Thank you, Convenor. I wanted to ask a question about what's included in the statistics for casualties and also a question about a particular issue in, in the ward I represent. The first one about what's included in the, in the statistics for capturing information on casualties. I take it e-scooters are included in bus goods and others in that table if there's any injuries caused or involving e-scooters. And in relation to that as well, I'd like to know how we would capture any injuries that are caused by e-scooters with collisions with pedestrians on, on pavements, because that's an issue that's raised with me more and more by residents about near misses and bangs that they've received as a result of e-scooters. So that's my question in relation to the statistics. And then in relation to an issue in my ward, on appendix C and page 17, it has Strathern Road at Fairfield Road, traffic coming. I, I met on site with officers and residents some years ago to look at that and measures were to be taken forward. And then several months ago, all elected members in the ferry received drawings of what was being proposed by way of, of traffic coming measures. But now I find it's included in a list of 22 other schemes to be progressed over the next, over this year and the next financial year. And it's really to ask whereabouts in that list, the one that Strathern Road's likely to happen, given that it's been on the cards for such a long time.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. And I asked about that item just last week, actually, but I'll let Mr McNorton answer those two in the order that you asked them. So, Mr McNorton?
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. The data or the statistics which are included in the report, this comes from a report format from Police Scotland, who we get the accident data from called Stats 19. And again, it summarizes it into this field. With regard to e-scooters, they aren't recorded separately and they do come under the other category, as noted. What we do get though is we get the full reports, full injury accidents to accompany these statistics. So again, we have that data in the background and we look into that at a greater level of depth, which identifies the, the things like e-scooters and so forth. So again, we've not reported it, which is just the breakdown in, as measured by the Scottish Road Safety Framework criteria for, for the KPIs we measure against, but we do have that data in the background that we drill into. With regard to the Strathern Road Fairfield Works, we've moved to a two year programming. And again, this is in relevance to the note that we have in the report, that we do have new schemes that have to slot in during the year and reprioritise if issues do come up. So we've moved to a two-year reporting programme for that. With that particular site, though, it is programmed for this financial year. I believe it's soon after Christmas, so quarter four of the current financial year programme, we're looking to implement those works.
Bailey Scott, are you happy with that answer?
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just to begin by welcoming the forthcoming 20 mile per hour zones in the lawyers' drive, in particular, we Camp Hill Road, which is quite another twisty wee road and I've, over the years, heard a lot of complaints about real or or sometimes actually imagined speeding up and down there. So that's good to see. A couple of questions, really. I'm looking at page 19. The first question would be, there's reference made to the a possible pedestrian crossing in Brook Street. And I think basically it boils down to it's all been put on hold pending the electrification of the East Coast Main Line, which frankly may or may not happen. And it just seems to me that I don't think the council should be waiting for them to do something which we could just be getting on with now, rather than waiting for the project, which I would kind of like to see come along. But on the other hand, it may go the the way of HS2. So that's my first question. The second question would be the, there's mention made of forthcoming crossings in Dalhousie Road and also Moneyfeath Road. Now, this has been going on for quite a long time. I think Mr. McNaughton will appreciate I've been in touch with us a few times about when when is it actually going to happen? You know, because the residents keep saying, well, you promised me that months ago, but where is it? So I'd be interested in these answers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you very much for the questions, councillor Duncan. With regard to the Book Street Crossing, it is, as you identify, pending determination from the Network Rail Electrification Project. We're not holding off until the the programme, the the project's committed or starts on the ground. We're just waiting for the traffic assessment. So the main part of that is the determination of what happens with a level crossing the bridges. So once we've got an indication of what the future plans are for that, then we can move forward with having a look at this junction. One of the big caveats or criterias on it at the moment is what's happening with traffic around that area. So it may require signalisation of the junction. So until we get further clarification from that traffic assessment by Network Rail on what their intentions are with the bridges and the the level crossing, we can't move forward with that one, unfortunately, at the moment. With regard to the Dalhousie Roads, Moneyfeath, I'll certainly get you an update on the programme for that. I was trying to find the, I've got a date for it, I just can't find it at the moment, but I'll I'll come back to you on that.
Okay, thanks for the qualification. And yeah, good if you can come back to me. But going back to my first point about the waiting on Network Rail, can we have an idea of time scales? So I mean, I appreciate that you need them to come back to you, but have they given you an indication of when we can expect to hear from them?
Yeah, thanks very much. It is out with our gift or our control. So I'm hesitant to put forward time scales for that. However, they are working on it at the moment, I can say, and we are awaiting the outcome of that. So I know that they are actively working on that traffic assessment at the moment. But again, because it's dependent on Network Rail and their submission of a plan application, which is linked to, I can't give the time scale for that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Duncan. Councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. And I'm quite pleased to see that the proposals for the Calpsey Road at St Lina Place and Leith Street at Craigel Primary School. However, I'm just wanting to have some clarification. I know that it says they have been considered for pedestrian facilities. Does considered mean this will actually happen? And what I don't want is it to be considered and then rejected, to be frank. So the actual status of what considered is actually meaning would be helpful, please.
And I believe that there are appended site constraints identified in that one, but Ms. McNaughton, can you give more clarity on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely, convener. It's, we use the word considered because we haven't done the full assessment yet. And as noted in the report, there are can be constraints which can prevent pedestrian crossings physically being able to go in there. However, we have had an initial look at these these pedestrian crossing locations, the five that we've listed. And we do believe they are doable, so to speak. So we're not anticipating any restrictions on actually progressing with those.
Thank you. So that's a satisfactory, councillor Coleman?
That's great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And councillor Short, I believe you're next.
Thank you, convener, and welcome. And I just wanted a little bit of a clarification to begin with, before I go on to my main question. We have observers this evening from the ASAG. If you're not aware, that's the Albert Street Action Group. And they're here as observers. And I just wanted to clarify probably with Mr. Many, could they have been a deputation to speak to this item themselves? It's just that they've had a number of questions and we've had a bit of ping pong going back between myself and Ewan and the group. And it may have been a bit easier if they had been able to speak to us all directly. So that was the first part of my question, please.
And Mr. Many, are you able to advise on that, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to do that, convener. In answer to councillor Short's question, it would have been perfectly in order for the group in question to have submitted a request for a deputation, which would have been reported to the committee tonight. And had the committee so agreed, then the deputation could have been heard and questions could have been asked and answered.
Perfect, thank you. So that's maybe something that we can use going forwards. And the next part of it, and I'm sure Mr. McNaughton knows where I'm going with this, unintended consequences. And the ASAG group have been incredibly good at getting their point across about the number of HGVs and also through buses going down Albert Street. And there has been a change. However, my inbox is now very full of people who live in Old Craigie Road and also some in Dal Keith Road, who are now experiencing the problems with the HTVs and buses to the point of nine through buses in one day. And obviously, we don't have any cam, car, traffic calming whatsoever in that area. But what we do have is we have a Muslim cemetery. And as we know, because of custom, that can be something that happens very quickly. So there isn't an ability to put out war, any warnings. And also in addition to that, we also have a much more lively football team there. And certainly compared to the 20 years ago when I lived there, there's a lot more people will be there on a regular basis. So as far as unintended consequences are concerned, and hopefully the 20 miles an hour will help. However, how do we work together to get that traffic down the way that we want it to go, which is down the Kingsway and down across Dock Street, please?
Thank you for the question, councillor Short. It's obviously a very complicated scenario in terms of trying to manage individual preferences and in terms of where you draw the line, actions versus advice. Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you for the question, councillor Short. It's quite a meaty subject. Appreciate that we have had correspondence and discussions about this previously. And as you're aware, there's a range of measures that we're we're looking at, both short term and long term, and counter some of the traffic problems in the area.
Okay, so, well, anyway, from the point of view that the 20 miles per hour are coming, one of my questions was, is help, they're not in alphabetical order. So that was good to know that they're all becoming at the same time. So hopefully, the quicker we see this coming through with consultations, TROs, et cetera, the better to make it a lot more safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Short. And in order of what I've got next is councillor Scullin, councillor Crookchance and Bailey Keenan. And that'll be the last questions on the subject for the people that I can see here. So councillor Scullin, please.
Thank you. And yeah, I was just a quick question about the map that's in the report. It's, looks like the Western Gateway is a proposed 20 mile an hour zone. However, there are speed bumps, 20 mile an hour signs on the road and 20s plenty signs up around there already. So is it proposed because the roads aren't adopted as yet? And if so, is there any update on when those roads will be adopted?
Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you for the question. You're correct, it's to do with the adoption. So after the roads were adopted by the council, they then become public roads and we can change the speed limits from the national speed limits to different speed limits. The the, it's a phased, there's about seven phases in the estate and there were varying stages of completion. Some are going through final snagging, but I can get you an update on the phasing, if you if you like, after this meeting.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to correct myself, Bailey, first, you were off my screen, so you'll be my last question on this agenda item. Councillor Crookchance, please, comment on the question.
Thank you very much, convener. And just like Lynn, I've been contacted by members of the Albert Street Action Group and they've sent me a list of questions that they would like answered. And I don't, well, the word within within councillor Short's contribution, so I will go ahead. The members of ASAG are, I think it's great news to hear that 20 miles per hour zone has been proposed at this meeting. Albert Street is a district shopping centre and is really beginning to thrive with new misnew initiatives. This will make it more attractive for shops and businesses, improve air quality and pedestrian safety and make it more economically viable. 20 mile per hour zones are vital just now and government policy endorses this. Members of the ASAG group are deeply concerned that the map relating to this proposal and annexed period of this report shows key roads, Picaro Road, Clifton Road, Durst Street, Fawker Road, Nobro Road and Black Lane. Are these included in the 20 mile per hour zone or are they excluded? If they are excluded, then we are lost in the standard submission. Earlier this, well, earlier last week, I believe that a couple of members of the ASAG group met with the self councillor Rome and been advised by council officers that Albert Street could not do and could not be 20 miles per hour because it's still deemed as an arterial arterial road by Transport Scotland. This is despite the planning inquiry senior reporter using the North North East arterial route in 1993, 94 after appeal. This reporter said that throughgoing traffic should use the Kingsway, Green Dykes and Dock Street trunk road as the correct bypass route. So I wanted the the questions. Oh, well, just to add to that, if this is, if this is what was told to the to the members of the group and we're sitting here with the report that look, that's looking for approval for 20 miles per hour for for Albert Street, then why, you know, why are we debating this? And why has a senior officer been undermined in this manner?
We therefore George, George, can I just, can I just stop you there? Sorry. I'm not hearing you very well, but there's a lot of different things that you brought up there. So if I can maybe ask Mr. McNaughton to answer some of that. You're you're perfectly correct. I did have the the chance to meet with representatives of the Stoswell Forum and the Albert Street Action Group. And I thought that was really quite useful to to hear about what they're doing. And I've got a number of things that they've raised to to officers so far and hopefully will continue to engage in a constructive manner. But can I ask Mr. McNaughton just to come back on some of the points you've raised? And if there are some things that he didn't pick up, we can maybe come back to that briefly. But I'm conscious we've spent quite a long time on this already so far. So, Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you very much, convener. I actually had the benefit of receiving a copy of the questions in advance of committee. So I can, there's three main points and I'll just run through them. The first one was about Transport Scotland's role in our traffic regulation order process. So just to clarify the situation, Transport Scotland are responsible for the trunk road traffic orders and the local council. So the council was local roads authority, responsible for the local road network traffic orders. So both parties, both council can object to trunk road orders and vice versa. Traffic Transport Scotlandors, they can object or comment on local ones. But it's for Dundee City Council's, this committee, to decide on orders. Any objections will be heard by committee, but it's ultimately for this committee to decide whether or not to proceed with orders or not. The second question about the principal road network map, the in appendix B of the report, the black lines do denote the principal road network. Again, these are roads which are retained for existing speed limits and aren't promoted for 20 miles an hour. This follows the 2016 Transport Scotland Best Practice Guidance on 20 mile an hour zones. And also probably more importantly, follows the 2016 Dundee City Council Public Consultation on 20 mile an hour zones, which included representations from the emergency services and Police Scotland and a number of other groups and residents, which sought to retain a strategic principal road network at higher speed limits to facilitate travel across the city. The last question was on the Scottish Government's commitment for 20 mile an hour zones and the release of these. And we do have a sustainable transport delivery plan, which will be coming to committee later on in this year, which will provide a bit more detail on that. And we're also continuously seeking any opportunities for additional funding, additional external funding, which will help us accelerate our programme to provide the resources to accelerate the programme for 20 mile an hours zones.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that response, Mr. McNaughton. I'm sure if the the members listening in on the group, listening in on the committee and to come back with further questions, then no doubt you'd be hearing from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bailey Keenan?
Thanks, convener. Convener, through our attention to page 17, appendix C and accident investigations and prevention sites. And there's probably some 20 odd sites mentioned there. And I've obviously liked to raise Strathmartin Road, Camberdown Road and Gilbert Road. And it would appear at the side of that, it's written vehicle activated junction signs. I don't know if that's the measure that officers are looking to put in place. And is that the only measure that they're considering, given that, you know, this is, I know there's been considerable numbers of accidents on this site or at that particular junction, many of them leaving cars written off. And indeed, someone was seriously injured only a matter of weeks ago because they knocked the door on one of the residents to get them some help. So I'm wondering what would these vehicle activated signs look like? And how will they be positioned so as there are no nuisance to the the local residents, given that a flashing sign outside your your house might just be an absolute light disturbance for them? And is there any other measures that officers believe they could put in place to make this junction safer? Given that we need to take into account there is going to be a a large increase in traffic using Strathmartin Road, given the number of houses that we are building on St Columbus site, the Downfield School site and indeed what what could end up in old Baldragan, Curtain High area and what's been built outside the city in Angus, what's main route into the city would be Strathmartin Road.
Thanks for the question, Bailey Keenan. And Mr. McNaughton, do you have that level of detail just now? Or do you want to come back to elected members regarding that particular question?
Yeah, thank you, convener. The the proposal is summarised as vehicle activated junction signs. That's the the main feature of the proposal. It's it's actually an innovative new form of wired wired signs to the signals. So when the signals are going to amber or red, then the the signs in advance respond to that. There's also other measures as well which have been considered in there to do with the surface lining, so forth, giveaway markings and some other things as well. What I'll certainly do, I'll get one of our road safety officers to provide you some fuller details on what's proposed there.
So it's not just an act of its own saying you're driving at 30 mile an hour. These will be light controlled junction. Is that what I'm taking?
Correct, yeah. I don't think it's something that's done in Dundee before, so we knew for Dundee. But yeah, these are hardwired to the to the traffic lights to respond. So it's it's an early warning system effectively.
Certainly appears to be a bit better than it reads. So I look forward to seeing obviously a vast road improvement there.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Thanks for the response, Mr. McNaughton. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Thanks for the response, Mr McNorton. And last question, last but not least, Bailey McPherson. And apologies, in you come now, please.
No, no, no problem, Convena. My question's really about the information, helpful information, I should add, in 6.7C on page seven, which is in relation to the PV2 assessment and the recommendation that it further moves from greater than one to 0.6. I'm just really wondering if Mr McNorton could give some indication as to, I've obviously had a look at all the information in appendix D, and I can see why the greater than one really didn't have that much impact or next to no impact really in terms of numbers of sites taken forward. And I can see that between point six and, and, and one, you're adding a few more. And in fact, there's some being considered are very close to point six. I was just really wondering, given the number that sit at sort of above point five, where point six had come from? So that's my first point. What's the, the, the logic in point six? But also, I assume, Mr McNorton, that that will again be kept under review, because obviously we want to see, there are a lot of sites here which don't meet the intervention level, but are repeat, I know from ones in my onboard, that won't meet the intervention level, but can continue to be a, shall we say, appear in one's mailbag very frequently. I can think of one in particular which doesn't meet the criteria Riverside approach, which is, given that it's between a park and a play park, is, is raised very frequently. So I suppose my questions are this, what's the logic of the point six? And secondly, I assume the point six will be kept under review to ensure that we actually get a throughput of enough crossings and other interventions similar to that going forward.
Thanks for the questions, Bailey McPherson. Both fair questions. And I think it's, it's a very technical thing. So again, I'm going to leave that to Mr McNorton to do, but it's, it's getting that balance between having too many interventions and having some interventions. But Mr McNorton, can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks. Thanks, Camina. The, yes, you're correct on both points. It's, it's, it's a balance effectively. The, there is a, you know, an understandable desire to support active travel, to get more further pedestrian crossings through in a programme. But again, that's balanced against affordability aspect, both in terms of, we've currently got 93 pedestrian crossings in Dundee. They last about 20 years. They do have a cost, both installed and maintained. So putting them in where there is actually a, an identifiable tangible need for it, for the opportunity to cross. What we've done at the moment is we've taken it down slightly, intervention level. And again, that's targeting ones that are on school, school route corridors or active travel corridors. And again, it's something that will be kept under review. So while we've still got a throughput of pedestrian crossing, new installations coming through, but at a manageable level.
Yeah, I'm happy with that response. Thanks, Mr McNorton.
Okay, thank you, Bailey McPherson. Thank you, Mr McNorton. Having had the opportunity for questions now, can this item be agreed? I see no dissent, so this item is agreed. Elaine, can you move us on to the next item, please?
Thank you, Convena. Item five, fleet procurement sourcing strategy. You have a report for you.
So this item seeks approval for the sourcing of, sourcing strategy for plant and vehicles. So sourcing strategy continues the council's current practice of utilising national framework contracts to secure best value in assets procured. Does anyone have any questions on this item? I'm not seeing any hands raised. So can this item be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Moving on then, please, Elaine.
Thank you. Item six, tenders received by head of sign and property and head of Sustainable Transport and Roads.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of eight tenders with a combined expenditure in the region of £340,000 for surveys, construction and infrastructure work across the city. I really welcome this, particularly the, the items to do with sustainable development and increasing cycling to schools and independent living. Do we have any questions on this item? I don't see any questions on this item, so I'll take that as agreement. Thank you, everyone. And that's the business of the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the City Governance Committee.
Didn't get myself off quick enough. Sorry about that, folks. Welcome to City Governance. We'll start the business. Willie.
Thanks very much, Convena. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
There are any. I'll give it 30 seconds. You know, I'm always too quick to answer for you. I see nobody reaching for the keyboard. Oh, apologies. Willie, Bailey Sawyer.
A non-financial interest in respect of item nine, Convena.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I think with that noted, we will move on.
Thank you. Takes on item two, Minister of Pairs and Subcommittee, the recessed Subcommittee, therefore noting.
Again, self explanatory. Can these be agreed? Thank you very much. Willie.
And then takes on item three, the agenda note for Royal Bank of Scotland, the site has been placed on the agenda by councillor Duncan.
Councillor Duncan, Craig, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Convena. I just wonder if officers can maybe circulate the motion and I'll speak to it, if that's okay.
Sounds like a good plan.
Excellent. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I was keen to actually put this on the, the formal committee because to my mind, it's part of a very unwelcome trend, not just in Dundee, but up and down the UK, unfortunately, in recent years of banks seeking to basically weave the communities that they have served for many a year, but also the communities themselves have served the banks rather well for many a year as well. RBS and Brody Ferry, despite what RBS may claim, is actually a very busy branch indeed. And almost to illustrate that, that point, I was being interviewed outside by some members of the media and even near the mark on just how busy a branch is in terms of people coming and going. So that's, that's the point to make, that RBS, you know, and myself and I'm sure other elected members, you know, have been in touch with them, you know, by writing to them, asking them in, in the first instance, to do the decent thing and to actually give people, the people of Brody Ferry who have served them for, for, you know, many, many a years, the chance, now that they know the branch is under threat, to, I suppose, use it or lose it. The actual stats, the figures that RBS have provided to myself and others, I've got real concerns about how actually valid they are. You know, they, they use almost, in my view, made up criteria of what constitutes a loyal customer. I think off the top of my head, it's something, you need to, you need to go to the branch in person, at least once a week over the six month period. So too bad if you go on holiday or something like that, you know, you're, you're no longer a regular customer. Now, to my mind, a far, a far more accurate appraisal of the, that, that branch's fortunes would be how many people actually hold accounts there, how much money is held there in the names of those people, how much money goes in and out. In other words, the volume of transactions. I think this, this nonsense about what they claim as a, a regular customer is something of a red herring. The other thing is, and I've mentioned it, you know, of, over many, many years, RBS has done rather well out of the community of Brody Ferry. And by that community, I mean both residents and businesses. And I think it ill behoves, particularly RBS of all institutions, to forget that quite frankly, they wouldn't exist anymore had it not been for the generosity of taxpayers who actually saved them from the feat that a previous management had managed in foot, which was bankrupting their own bank. So before they just say cheery bye to the, the Brody Ferry and ride off into the sunset, I really think they owe it to us to have a grown up conversation. Like I say, I wasn't, you know, I don't live in the past. If there really isn't the business, then I can't argue against that. But from observation and the many, many, many people who have been in touch with me reflecting that observation, it is a busy branch and I do think that they owe it to the people and communities of Brody Ferry to reconsider. At the very least, I want them to postpone their, their decision to see if footfall does in fact pick up. I'm confident it will and I want RBS to give the community of Brody Ferry that chance. So the thing that occurred to me, I mean, if, if they won't listen to me, if they won't listen to other people, then possibly they might actually gain to listen to this council itself as a corporate body. Dundee City Council does after all bank with RBS and therefore, you know, it's, it's time, I think, for this council as an institution to stand up to banks like that and say basically, not so fast. You know, as an institution, I don't think we can comfortably continue to deal with a, a bank that just turns its back on local communities at the drop of a hat and will not even enter into any meaningful consultation. And I would stress, there has been no consultation actually with the, the wider public and the people who have used that branch for many, many a years. So on that basis, you can see that I'm asking our chief, chief executive basically to like to their chief executive to ask them to reconsider this, in my view, hasty, rash and very, very unhelpful decision. Now, I know that, you know, councillor Shears has kind of agreed to, to second me, so I probably said enough and I'll pass over to him.
Thanks very much, councillor Duncan. Pete, I'll invite you in.
Thanks very much. And thanks to councillor Duncan for agreeing to allow me a second. It's much appreciated. I mean, councillor Duncan has said a lot of what I want to say, that community reaction to this branch being closed was huge. It was very, very angry as well. And I've been doing a petition on it and we're now over 2,000 signatures that have signed to keep that petition open. And, and just sort of give you a measure of how busy that branch is, when I initially went down there with enough room for 100 signatures, that was filled up within about 45 minutes. And we're now over 2,000 online and in person. And the, the one thing that when you speak to customers there that really shines through is just how well the staff in that branch know the community, they know their customers, the service they give is outstanding. And a lot of the people that are going in are older people and people who can't access online banking services for any number of reasons. And a lot of people that given the alternative is Dundee City Centre, for them to travel to Dundee City Centre can be a bit of an ordeal if they have mobility issues, if they are older. And so there was genuine upset when they heard that the branch was closing there. And as councillor Duncan touched on, the numbers were, that they gave were unjustifiable. When they say, I've got the same numbers here as councillor Duncan, you need to visit every week for six months and you also have to make a transaction as well. And so a lot of people will go in for financial advice, something like that, but they, they wouldn't be classed as having a visit, they wouldn't be a regular customer, they're not counted. And they, they really have gained the numbers here to try and say, this isn't a busy branch. We're totally justified in it closing. And again, just as councillor Duncan said, the taxpayer bailed them out. The taxpayer still owns 45% of that bank. And what are we getting back for it really? But it's, it's a real community hub, that bank, and I sincerely hope that committee will back this with the backing of all parties tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. There's a couple of others, so I'll bring in Bailey Wright next. Helen.
Yes, thank you, Convena. I know this is about the Brody Ferry branch, but I think all our communities have suffered from the bank deciding to close branches. And recently, Coleside had the TSB branch closed. And I've had an ongoing dialogue with the Bank of Scotland after they informed me in July that the Fairmuir branch will be closing on the first of November. And I support the motion and hope that they have more success than I have had so far, because I feel it's worthwhile reminding the banks that during the global financial crisis, taxpayers generously provided substantial financial support to the banking centre. And in light of this, I feel it's only fair to expect, you know, reciprocation from the banks in the form of support for local communities. I think by recognising the decisions to close these branches, banks can display their commitment to social responsibility and their duty to assist the areas that have been supporting them through thick and thin. The response I've had so far has largely been an attempt to justify the closures without, in my view, any real efforts to engage with the community in any meaningful way about the concerns of residents or the impacts on closure, on what the closure will have on the community and also on other businesses. And I think the nature and the fabric of our community holding everything together, the response like creative imagination, thinking that could only offer an alternative outcome beneficial to our community and to local economy, the response largely sidestep the crucial issue of social responsibility and their obligation to the community, especially considering the financial support banks receive from the public purse during that financial crisis. My response to the manager who had informed me about the closure was answered by someone from a group executive complaints department, but it was rather telling actually when I delve further into it, to find that the document was authorised by someone from the brand and marketing strategy. And for me, this raises concerns about the bank's priorities and supports the view that I have, that their primary focus is on protecting their brand and also creating marketing strategies which would only further increase their huge profits, rather than genuinely addressing the concerns of some of our communities. This sends a distressing message that profit and reputation take precedence over the wellbeing of the community, which in my view is unacceptable. I think large enterprises such as banks really must show a greater sense of social responsibility. And I certainly, Craig and Pete, wish you well in your discussions with the Royal Bank of Scotland. Thank you.
Thanks very much for those comments. I think there's obviously a few speakers and there's a few more to provide comment. I think Georgia and Derek are next, but just a quick comment from myself. I, I think many of the points that have been made very articulately are really important and we should all remind ourselves that I think very sadly, these decisions seem to be almost a domino effect. We've seen over a number of years, different banks taking decisions that affect directly our community's ability to engage. I think there's also something about, and you know, councillor Duncan might have alluded to this himself, that, you know, I suspect that they made the decision long before they announced the decision. And that should give us all cause for concern. And there is an element of paying lip service to the idea of consultation or dialogue with the community or indeed with the elected representatives that represent that community that again, reminded of the comments that you've already made in terms of the ownership and bailing out by the taxpayer of these multi-billion pounds, multi-trillion pound banks, they should be reminded of it. So I think certainly it seems that we will have a united voice on this front. Again, not just on the Brody Ferry element, but I think more broadly, the fact that the continuous erosion of banks within our communities can have a seriously detrimental impact on people within those. So I'll bring in the next two speakers. So councillor Crookshank next. Georgia.
Thank you, Convena. And I would like to echo the sentiments put forward by councillor Duncan and to pay tribute to councillor Shears for his activity in the community to demonstrate to RBS how critical local banking is to residents who cannot easily access online alternatives. In my vote, residents and traders are sorely feeling the loss of their last bank, bank branch, meaning that many basic services are inaccessible without a trip into town. In particular, it creates extra pressure on traders who can't deposit their takings a few doors up the road. They've got to visit the city centre bank whilst juggling their busy schedule around open times that are often restrictive. Banking is an important feature of daily life for everyone, so the sector should be doing everything it can to support that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, George, for those comments. And I think last contribution is from Bailey Scott. Derek.
Thanks, Camina. Can I start by thanking councillor Duncan for putting this item on the agenda and also to councillor Shears for the sterling work he's done in getting 2,000 names to sign the petition, which is quite a significant number for, for a petition. Like my ward colleagues, I share concerns about the impact the closures going to have on vulnerable customers and those who might experience difficulties accessing alternative services and also the impact it's going to have on local businesses, as Georgia has said, that rely on the banks for depositing cash and collecting change. And none of the alternatives that have been put forward are a substitute for the convenience of being able to pop into a, a local branch. RBS, as others have said, RBS is a real integral part of the local community and it's upset a lot of people. And, and people really do value the personal touch that local branches offer that can't be replicated in the same way at a large chief office or via internet banking. Another concern I have is the, the, the possible change in shopping habits that might occur if customers have to travel to Dundee to do their banking. Instead of combining a, a shopping trip to Brody Ferry to bank and shop, customers may. Customers may, who wish to have a face-to-face meeting at RBS, might now do that elsewhere instead. And it's loyal customers who've had accounts with RBS for decades but aren't perhaps digital users, the ones who are being disadvantaged. And the post office has been suggested as an alternative. And while it has some positives such as longer opening hours and opening at the weekend, it's limited by what it can do. You could withdraw cash from a current account, you could check your balance and you can pay in cash and checks, but you need a bank pay-in slip to do that. But what you can't do, which most people want to do when they go into a bank is to transfer money from an account. Make inquiries about other financial products, discuss more complex matters or arrange for the completion of legal documents such as power of attorney. I had a look online to see how many banks have been closed in recent years. And I was really surprised to see that since 2015, 54 bank branches a month across the UK are being closed. And if that carries on at that same rate, then people in Dundee, and it's not just an issue for Brody Ferry, but people in Dundee. Will be left with fewer opportunities to visit a bank branch. And then we'll have to start looking at things like banking hubs, as has recently been opened in Carnoustie, because they've lost three bank branches in as many years. And Moneyfeath doesn't have a branch, so we might be moving into that sort of territory if bank branches continue at the same rate. So I really hope that the letter from this committee makes a big difference and RBS respond as we would like them to.
Thanks very much, Derek, I think my colleagues just snuck in towards the end there, so councillor Flynn, I'll bring you in.
Yeah, thanks for your patience, I think I have to agree with everything that's been said previously by elected members. I'd just like to take it one step further, that although the motion here is actually to write to one particular bank group. I would propose that we actually write to all the bank groups, because as Bailey Wright's touched upon in my own ward as well as our ward. TSB's closed, the Bank of Scotland's now proposing to close another branch. And I think that's a fear that Bailey Scott has touched upon, the continual closures and the ramping up slowly. And stealthily, I would say, by banks to close the banks themselves, the branches. And without any guarantee of free access to cash. And I think that's one of the concerns going forward, that there's a bigger picture to this whole thing, what the banks are doing. I take on board exactly what councillor Shears and others have said with regards to the banks being bailed out. But is there not a case here where we should get the chief executive possibly to write to either all the leaders of the banks, or the bank heads, I should say. Or actually include our MPs to take it further and take it to the chancellor and get him to actually work with the financial conduct authority and raise the issues with them. That actually the services are being withdrawn from organisations which we bailed out severely in 2008. Without any recourse to sort of support those in the public who need to access the bank and need access to their money. But also to talk to people severely and in many cases about the concerns they might have with family circumstances, etcetera, as things change. So I would like us to go a bit further than just this motion, I think councillor Duncan bringing this to the chamber is actually the right thing to do. But I think we need to go further and I think we need to address it with all the banks, but possibly take it further as well. So I'll probably ask if councillor Duncan maybe want to change it slightly to do that and actually take it further, if you could think of that.
I will defer to councillor Duncan because it is his motion, I would perhaps say though that we need to think about specific branch. Branches within the city, I suppose, so those that have closed and those that are still open. So we might want to do a little bit of reset, so anyway, I will defer to you Craig because it's your motion.
And thanks, Convenor, and also thanks councillor Flynn. I think it's a good idea, I mean, the only problem that I would have is that I think the conveners just alluded to it, that you know, if we broaden it out and don't mention particular branches. And also the way that I've put my motion, I think it has particular effect, if it's going to have any effect at all, of course. But it hinges upon the fact that DCC banks with RBS. So I think that it would be good for us, you know, to fire like a broader motion, but I think maybe, maybe you yourself might want to bring that motion actually. But I think I'd be happy for this one to kind of stay as it is and focus on RBS because we bank with them.
Okay, thanks councillor Duncan. And can I just perhaps try and offer a helpful suggestion, which may well be that the representative leaders for each of the groups co-sign a letter to that. You know, to that point that councillor Flynn makes in addition to your specific motion. And then that allows that to progress without necessarily any further delay. But happy to take that off table and I don't want to distract from the motion that's in front of us right now as per your suggestion. So sorry, let me just check with what Pete's saying, if you can get a second comment. Okay, fair enough, thank you very much. I will bring in councillor Lynn and then Bailey McPherson and then I'm going to try and bring this to a conclusion. Councillor Lynn.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. I think we all know that it's primarily older people that suffer from when banks close. And I think Age UK has pointed out that it's the over 80s in particular that suffer. And it's not, in most cases, it's because they lack the online skills to be able to manage their bank account online. But I think also for a lot of older people, it's part of their weekly routine to see familiar faces, to see people in the bank who can give them that financial advice that they've been given for so long. But I think one thing I think we're maybe missing out and Age UK point this out as well. That the banks should really be doing more to encourage and support older people to gain digital skills and benefit from online banking. And it seems to me that's a bit of an omission. Could we maybe ask and provide some money? For us as a council perhaps to appoint someone as a digital inclusion officer for older people with a special remit to help them with banking issues. Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, Ken, thanks for the suggestion, I think that's something we can perhaps pick up. I had a very positive meeting with Centre Advice Bureau on Monday of last week as well, just talking about advice services for older people. But specifically that question around banking services, etcetera, would be something to pick up. I'm happy to do so with the meeting as well, so I'll bring in Bailey McPherson and then we'll wrap up the item.
Thanks, Convenor, it was simply to say that I agree with your suggestion that rather than trying to tweak a motion on the hoof, if you like, that separately. Group leaders perhaps write something jointly along the lines of, you know, what councillor Flynn suggests. Could I perhaps maybe just raise a procedural matter for a little moment? My screen froze just for a couple of minutes, right at the end of councillor Rome's committee. And when it came back, and I mean literally two minutes, we were on to your committee. And I thought the neighbourhood regeneration and housing estate management committee, my goodness, that's a, that's a short one, isn't it? Did that actually happen? I know it's only got a couple of items, but did we miss it or did I just miss it, if you know what I mean, Convenor?
No, don't worry and rest assured, you haven't missed it and it will come immediately after this committee. So don't worry, the business will be considered by all of us in due course, once we get through this agenda.
It's just that's not the order that we have on the papers.
Yeah, no, I did clock that myself, but that was the order that were introduced, so we will deal with the business. And I see Bailey Keating wants to come in, I'm going to presume that's a question related to the order of.
No, it's in relation to the item that we're looking at. I think it's wise that we just progress with the motion that's put forward. And it would suggest that perhaps officers could be involved in drawing together a paper that we would go out to a wider consultation. With other MSPs and MSPs to lobby on our behalf. Because the access to cash is a real issue for people. And I think we shouldn't have missed that. You know, it's really important for people running their households' budgets, that there's that opportunity to deal in cash rather than deal with your card. Because if you're hitting a card all the time as these banks close and take away another cash machine, then it becomes very difficult for people. So I think there is a much wider thing than cobbling together a letter to put forward. I think the sentiments of what we're hearing tonight is that we should be doing something. I think we're just, there's a few other bits that we need to take in account.
Right, thank you very much for those comments. We have got a meeting of leaders on the first of September, so that's probably a good point on which to come back to that and make sure that we're in a position to take that forward. But with all of those contributions, I think we're in a position where there is unanimous agreement, unless anybody tells me otherwise at this point. Can I presume that there is broad agreement on that item? Thank you very much, thank you all for your contributions, we'll move on, Willie.
Yes, thank you very much, I think four days, the chief executive service plan, you asked to approve the service plan.
Again, this is the annual update that provides an overview of how the chief executive service is delivering and also the direction of travel for the next five years. And the key priorities and improvements that we're seeing across that service, as well as some of the challenges that the service is contending with. So I'll just go straight to questions and comments, so Bailey McPherson, Fraser.
Thanks indeed, my question's really around, I should first of all say, I think this is actually lots of information well presented. And I commend officers for the effort that's gone into producing this, as you say, annually. My question, well, first of all, a positive point I would make about some of the information on page 31. And it's really about the local fairness initiative currently in Llanlaethen. I had the pleasure of visiting that during the recess, I was hugely impressed by the commitment and empathy of not just council officers, but all the other parties who are involved. And the work that they've been doing. And the obvious question I asked them is, you know, can we expand that into other areas of the city? And obviously, they mentioned part of Stobswell, Stobswell West as it's referred to. But I suppose my question for officers, and I appreciate there is a resource aspect to this. It is officers' time and it's officers from not just our own authority, but obviously other organisations, DWP, Social Security Scotland, the whole host of others as well. But I was just really wondering if the chief executive or perhaps Mrs Calder could give some indication as to what is planned in relation to other areas of the city? Because there are quite a number of areas that quite frankly would benefit from the intense and I have to say, very helpful interventions. That is currently being taking place in Llanlaethen.
Thanks very much for the question, Fraser, I'll bring in the chief executive in just a second, but I think it's worth just making comment very briefly about that. I agree with you, I think the initiative is fantastic, the collaboration is heartening to see these types of organisations, which don't always have the best reputation, let's be honest. Particularly the DWP, really leaning into this initiative to support people in that community. And I think the more that we can learn from that experience and then export out into other communities, the better. It's been a topic of conversation and there's been real broad support from the fairness leadership panel as one of the vehicles for kind of taking forward the conversation on poverty in the city. And I know that they are very supportive of that initiative and very supportive of its expansion in the future as well. So Greg, do you want to come in, provide some further information?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, thanks Bailey McPherson. So at the point, the team are looking at an expansion in Stobswell area. There is however, quite a detailed evaluation that's currently being carried out by Scottish government that all partners are feeding into. And once that evaluation has been concluded and we evaluate the findings, then partners will then discuss what opportunities we have for further extending the pathfinder, so to speak, within services. You touched on a key point and it is about resources. So what I'm keen to make sure is the resources that we deploy in are having the most significant benefits for those that most need it. So once I've got that evaluation, I will come back to elected members with an update and recommendations.
That's very helpful indeed, thank you.
Thanks Fraser. Now I can see, thank you Pete for pointing out councillor McHugh's hand is up. I don't know whether Georgia was before or after, so hopefully I'll get it in the right order. I'm going to bring in councillor Croke Shank first because it's first in the chat, Dorothy, so forgive me, Georgia.
Thanks, Convenor. I'd like to welcome the fact that Dundee has been accredited as a living wage city for the past three years and long near that last. I do note however, that so far only 122 employers are accredited. Given that the total number of employers in all sectors is many times larger than that, I wonder if progress has been made quickly enough. Firstly, I'm sure there will be employers who have already paid the living wage, but perhaps don't know that they can get accredited. What more can be done to raise awareness? I have been having discussion with some in the licensing trade and the cost of accrediting. To the Scottish Living Wage Forum can be prohibitive. And given that this is an annual fee, many of them are reluctant to buy into it sort of thing. So I suppose what I was wondering was, could Dundee run its own accredited living wage system? Thank you. And I've got another question, if you'll indulge me, and that's on the inclusive communications on page 28. The report states that the council is committed to develop inclusive corporate communications, which sounds really positive. But I suppose the point that we cannot claim inclusivity if information is not universally accessible. With the closure of the public inquiry desk at the district or housing offices with a sharply reduced appointment only alternative at the box office. Many people find it harder than ever to find information about the council services or to receive vital advice. Can officers please explain how they reconcile these barriers with an inclusive communication strategy? Thank you.
Thanks, George, I'll bring in officers in just a moment. I think it's worth touching upon your first comment in terms of the living wage accreditation and seeing that progression. Because obviously we were the first in the UK to become a living wage city, which is an incredible, I think testament to the work that's been underway in the city for a number of years. But also a testament to our ambition collectively as a council in trying to tackle those issues in fair work terms. And if I go back to 2022, we had 94 employers and 18,000 employees. But very quickly after that was announced, we also managed to sign up, for example, NHS T side, one of the largest employers in the region, never mind the city. So I think since then, there's been progress in it. I would perhaps caution not focusing on too many, on too much on the business numbers, but actually the employee numbers. Because as you know, the council employs approximately 8,000 people. But there might be a number of organisations which employ one or two people. So I think the number of employees benefiting is probably a better guide than the number of employers. And on your point on inclusive communications, I think again, I would play, pay credit to the team, particularly the communications team. Who are looking at different both modes and vehicles for communicating messages. So they are using all of the skills that they have within their team. But also every vehicle possible to ensure that they're connecting with people in the city. And that includes directly through community groups, it includes online, it includes in person. It also includes utilising, as we saw during the pandemic, on-street kind of billboards and advertising boards. Which they were able to access for free to help communicate messaging, just as they did with the cost of living crisis and the information that we're pushing out through there. So again, not to steal too much of Andrea's thunder, apologies Andrea, but I'll bring you in at this point to give a better answer than I could have.
So just on the living wage, there is an action group that's working across the city, so looking to target specific sectors. And I know they've been having quite a lot of discussion with the retail and hospitality sector. So that they are working closely with them and we're trying to look at any barriers. What we wouldn't probably suggest is trying to replicate some kind of accreditation locally. We would prefer to stick with the national accreditation. But obviously continue to look at why maybe some of the smaller employers are having any difficulties with that. And we've obviously got certain bigger employers that we're still working through, trying to target. What some of the living wage doesn't maybe kind of look at is the wider national groups that are living wage accredited. So we are looking specifically at Dundee-based employers and trying to target those ones. But obviously across Scotland, some of the bigger organisations are living wage accredited also. On the inclusive communications, we are making as much available possible online. But we are trying to target leaflets, posters about specific aspects of information people need to know about. So we've done that quite successfully around the open doors, but also cost of living. So we're using the bus stop billboards and things like that to try and get messaging out. We're also looking at the website for BSL and dyslexia and things like that to make sure that our websites is accessible as possible. And obviously, people can still contact our customer services via the telephone, so they can. so they can still get access to other information through telephone lines, even though they might not be able to go to face to face. Our local communities officers are upskilled in what's available, so they are trying to go out into the local communities as well to try and make sure that that information is readily available to local communities, so they know how to access food larders and any other kind of local access, like advice services. So we're trying to make that information available as much as we possibly can to try and mitigate any issues with customer services face to face, maybe not being quite as readily available now.
Thanks very much, Andrea. I'll bring in Dorothy next. Dorothy, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you. I actually had two questions, but one of them related to inclusivity of corporate communications. And we've already had some comments on that. It was interesting, I will say, to note that councillor Lynn suggested maybe the banks would like to give us some money for a digital inclusion officer. I think that's maybe something we could think about. In any case, whether we get money from the banks, I know money's tight, whether we get money from the banks or not. The other question had related to page twenty two, which was improvement indicators. The percentage of FOI requests where response is sent to information governance within ten days. Now, I'm not sure whether this is a Scottish government recommended indicator or one the council has set for itself. But I wondered whether any consideration has been given to monitoring the percentage of FOI requests responded to within the legal timeframe? You know, when the person who asked the question actually gets an answer? Or is this perhaps monitored and reported elsewhere?
Thanks for the question, Dorothy. I think that's one for Roger. Roger, can I bring you in at this point, please?
Thanks very much indeed, Convena. The council's responses to FOIs are monitored by the information governance team, and information is regularly provided to all services. I'd be very happy to share that with elected members out with this meeting.
Yeah, thanks very much. You're happy with that, Dorothy? Grand. Okay, thank you. I think that's all the comments on this item, so can I take this item as agrees, please? Thank you very much. Willie, we'll go back to the agenda.
Thank you very much. Item five, then is capital expenditure monitoring. This is for noting.
This provides an update on some of the variants within the capital plan. Obviously, we know that there are inherent challenges in terms of capital programme generally, and there's slippage within that programme, which is also impacted by market conditions, particularly in the construction industry, which, as we saw very recently with the price of tenders related to the East End Community Campus, are having some significant challenges on our ability to deliver the programme, as was costed at various points. But I'll bring in members for any questions they might have. So Fraser.
Thanks indeed. And it's in relation to the East End Community Campus, I do have a question, because as you allude to, it's part of the slippage, and it's quite significant amount, one five point seven million. My question for officers, and I just want assurance that the date given on page forty six is still as, is still the case, i.e. July twenty twenty five, which was what we agreed back on the twenty seventh of March as the completion date. Because obviously, were that not achieved, there's a significant knock-on effect, given obviously that's two schools going into one new building and catchment area issues and such like as well. So I just really want an assurance from officers that they are confident, or as confident as they can be, because we realise there's a couple of years to go down the track ship. Are they as confident as they can be at this stage that the July twenty twenty five target will actually be met?
I like the fact that, as you're asking a question, Fraser, all of the relevant officers start to pop up on my screen as well, which is ideal. But I'm going to go to Neil Martin, first of all, just in terms of that reassurance over the school build timeline. So Neil.
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, happy to give that confirmation. As you say, a two-year programme is a long period of time, but as of tonight, we are on program to hit that July date, twenty twenty five.
Okay, that's very helpful indeed. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Succinct and to the point, that's what I like. Thank you, Neil. I see no other questions or comments on this, so can I take that report as agreed, please? Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item six, revenue monitoring. This is also for noting.
Again, standard update on this report, setting out some of the overspend and underspend positions in terms of the situation across services within the council, and updates more generally on that variant. So I'll just bring in elected members who have a question, I think. Daniel, councillor Coleman first.
Thank you, Mr. Convena. On page sixty at six point three, the shortfall in streetscape and land management income was worryingly significant at over six hundred and sixty thousand. That's a very short, that's very short forecasted income. Can officers explain why the shortfall is so very significant? Is the position likely to improve or will more, a more realistic budget forecast have to be used in the future?
Thanks very much. As always the case with variances, sometimes this is for unforeseen reasons. But I'll bring in Tony Boyle in a moment, just to explain. If he doesn't have all the detail to hand, then perhaps we can follow up after the meeting. But Tony?
Nice, Convena. Thanks, councillor Coleman. Yeah, there's a whole range of issues. A lot of it is around our ability to meet some of these projects with the resources we've got. And obviously, internment fees is something that's variable, so we can't really predict too accurately from time to time how much we're going to get in. That is the main reason why we've got that noted in the report at this stage.
Thank you very much, Daniel. See you in order. Okay. Grand. Okay, councillor Clayton Michael, next.
Thank you, Convena. My question is also in regards to page sixty. It's the figure at six point six, the council tax reduction underspend of three hundred and thirty thousand pounds, which is a concern. And given that we are in a cost of living crisis, the ongoing reduction in this caseload is pretty surprising. Could officers shed light on this, as it's a concern that people actually entitled are missing out? But I do welcome the proposed take-up in the campaign for older households, as the report allused to.
Yeah, I'll bring in Jackie Capel, because I think that's been a topic of conversation recently. We need to absolutely maximise the take-up of that particular fund. And I think it's really important that we do continue to make sure that the information is pushed out, as we were just discussing about inclusive campaigns as far and as wide as possible. And I think actually elected members have a role in that as well, so I would certainly ask all elected members to help share that information as and when the campaign starts. But Jackie, do you want to come in and just speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you for the question. Yeah, council tax reduction, obviously entitlement to that varies throughout the year, and it can vary month on month and quarter on quarter. As the, as the report mentions, we are going to do a campaign for older people later this into September. That campaign will be expanded to those of working age as well, and we'll put communications out to ensure that we're maximising the take-up of council tax reduction as much as we possibly can.
Thanks very much, Jackie. Bailey Keenan next. Kevin?
Thanks, Convena. Page sixty three goes through the actual spends with a percentage terms. And I'm just wondering how these fare percentage wise with any normal year. I was seeing a trend in more money being spent in some departments. I note that discretionary non-domestic rates are a budget of one hundred and seventeen percent. So considerably more money spent on that or given in relief than was expected.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Not sure if officers will have all the information to hand, but I'll bring in Robert in the first instance to provide an initial response. Robert?
So thank you, Convena and Bailey Keenan. The profile of spend in the year, particularly this early in the year, will depend on accruals carried forward from the previous year and on whether there are any particular payments that go out at particular times. I'm happy to provide Bailey Keenan with details of the profile in relation to discretionary and non-domestic rates. That's obviously applied according to the policy, and it may well be there's been an increase in applications for this year. So I can certainly provide that detail, and I can provide a comparison with spend at the same time last year. We can look potentially to include that in future reports, if that's helpful for members.
That'd be useful, thank you. Thanks for the question, Kevin. Okay, I see no further questions on this item. Can that be agreed? Thanking you very much. Willie, we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you. Item seven, then is records management policy. You asked to approve the policy.
Again, fairly self-explanatory, and there's no fundamental changes to the policy itself, so can this be agreed? Great. Thank you very much. Back to you, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Risk management. Item eight, review of policy and strategy. You asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, this is a regular update report on risk management and sets out a range of information around risk appetite, covering issues such as the city plan workforce, major project delivery, etc. So any questions on this? Nope. Can this be agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie?
Item nine is non-domestic rates, empty property relief and operational policy. You asked to agree the proposals.
Again, you'll see the information contained within the report. The proposed changes are designed to encourage building owners to return properties to active use. And I think that's something that we would all be supportive of and clearly sets out some of the changes in parameters for that policy as well. So I anticipate there's a couple of questions. I think Fraser, you're first, Fraser.
Thanks indeed. I can see the logic of this completely. And obviously, over and above the, if you like, reuse or positive use of empty properties, there's also an income generation aspect, which is alluded to in three point three. I was just really wondering, given that the council owns ninety of these properties, is that likely income generation gross or net of the fact that we'll actually have to pay some of it? The council will actually have to pay some of it itself. And secondly, the fact that we have ninety empty Dundee City Council properties, there will always be some. I think we all fully accept that. But I think it would be useful if, not just myself, but if elected members were given a little bit more detail. I'm not, I'm not going down to address level, but just an indication of the types of property and the length of time these empty properties that are owned by the council have sat empty. Because I think, obviously, we do want to see our own properties not empty, frankly, and having positive uses. So I was just really wondering if officers could answer the question on the level of likely income generation being net or gross of, you know, the financial encumbrance upon the council, and also if something could be circulated, not tonight, but in due course, about the breakdown of the type of properties that are owned by the council but are empty in the length of time they have been.
Yeah, thanks very much for the question, Fraser. I think both valid points, and certainly perhaps a briefing note after the committee that provides that overview and detail would be helpful for all twenty nine of us. I'll bring Jackie in in the first instance. Jackie?
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, the potential additional income of the one point five million is net of the council's properties. So we've taken that figure out of there. But Robin may want to provide a bit more detail around the ninety properties.
Yeah, thanks, Jackie. Robin?
Thanks, Jackie. Of the ninety properties, we've done an initial analysis, and it includes four main types. I think the first one, perhaps surprisingly, is vacant plots of land. I think members may be as surprised as I was to discover that you do pay vacant rates on some types of vacant plots of land, which are being held for development. So that is a reasonable number. I can't remember precisely, but that's a reasonable proportion of the ninety. The second thing is property that's being held for disposal, and that could be a longer term property that's difficult to dispose of for them. I'm sure many reasons that members can consider, not least which it may be a requirement to spend capital on the properties before they can be disposed of. And then the final one is simply the transitional turnover. I think Bailey McPherson alluded to this. A shop unit, for example, becomes vacant. It requires three months of marketing. It requires some redecoration before you can let it to another property. And then it may take another couple of months to be occupied. So I've reviewed with Jackie the list. I'm not concerned that there is somehow a glut of properties which should be occupied. I think the estates team have a very strong track record in turning around and re-letting property. We have an average ninety-two percent occupancy, which compares very well with other landlords in the same type of portfolio.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just going to say, thanks very much to both Jackie and to Robin for these very helpful bits of feedback. I think, as you allude to, some form of briefing note, giving us a little bit of breakdown on length of time empties. But I fully accept Robin's, you know, the points Robin makes about, you know, very good reasons why properties may be empty for a time. Sadly, I would say, Convena, from my previous existence, now thankfully retired from, I did actually know about vacant plots of land in some circumstances, but thankfully, that's beginning to drift from the memory. But I'm very grateful to both Jackie and to Robin for the responses.
Thanks very much, Fraser. I did fly with the idea of asking you to introduce the item, given your experience, but I thought better of it. So thanks you very much for your question. Thanks to officers for the response. I owe Bailey Keenan an apology, it seems, so I didn't realise that you had put a question after the question from the last item. So apologies, Kevin. I skipped over you there. I didn't realise that was on item eight.
It's okay. We'll raise it the next time. If not, I'll raise it with officers and get a response. In relation to item nine, the non-domestic rates, obviously concerned that we're having to lay aside a hundred and seventy odd thousand pounds for potential bad debt, I do realise that individuals that will be, have received the discount and that no longer going to receive a discount are going to be a bit upset at the change of policy. But obviously, I think that the Scottish government leaves, there will be no option but to go down this route, given that the financial settlements that we've had over many, many years have been extremely poor. But obviously, looking for officers to give some guidance as to how they will attempt to reduce that amount of bad debt and what sort of level of warning are we given on this change of policy out to individuals now, so as they can start planning towards, obviously, filling their property or disposing it to others or whatever they need to do. Because, as I said, none of them will be happy paying.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Kevin. I'll bring in Jackie to answer the substantive point. Jackie?
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question. Yes, following, if the proposal is approved at tonight's committee, we intend to write to business owners affected as soon as possible, giving them six months, six months' notice that from the first of April twenty four, the charge will be effective from then. We also intend to contact Business Gateway to make sure that the information gets out around the change of policy. So any business owners whose properties do become empty, they'll be aware of that forthcoming charge.
Thanks very much, Jackie. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, and I think just to, again, reiterate the point that I made earlier, I think it's really important that we use every power at our disposal to try and maximise use of any properties in the city. And I think this is one mechanism, and of course, it's always a balance act with carrots and sticks. But I think, again, striking that right balance and giving people six months' notice is the right thing to do. And I'm sure we'll see an increase in uptake or applications once people receive that notification through the letterbox. Councillor Malone, Charlie?
Yeah, just a very quick comment or observation, probably being slightly tangential, but that's kind of normally my way when it comes to committee business. It's just about, we noted there's a number of council properties, a number of properties that are owned by the council that are lying vacant. Now, I could count at least seven vacant premises, not small premises, but large premises in my ward. And the estate is in absolute disgrace. And I think that when you were talking about carrot and stick, John, I agree with you. But perhaps the carrot and the stick might be that you've got a requirement to actually maintain the land in good order, because we can't have a situation where people are staring on, you know, I mean, I've got three schools that are lying empty. And great for the rewilding project, but I think people would want to see something happening there in terms of the aesthetics of the area. Slightly tangential, no, John, but you did say at the last meeting, we could ask anything we liked, and you wouldn't intervene to stop any member of the council from saying what they liked. So I've tried to keep it as close as I can.
Thank you. I'm going to scratch that from the record there and maybe caveat what I said previously. No, thank you for the point, Charlie. And I think it's a well-made point, and that's always part of the challenge, isn't it? Particularly when we think of council assets, given the other things that we consider during this meeting in particular with balancing budgets, etc. But yeah, you're absolutely right. And I think it's worth also mentioning that there are other pieces of work that are underway to try and maximise the ability for the council to utilise powers that perhaps it doesn't have at present. to support exactly what you're talking about, making the city as vibrant or as attractive as it possibly can. And through my other capacities chair, the Scottish Cities Alliance, there's a piece of work looking on, for example, city centre and town centre properties. I'm working with Scotch government on the development of a strategy in that regard as well. So I think there's a lot more to do on this front, but what we're doing through non-domestic rates is certainly helpful, as you said at the start as well. So thanks for that. Bring in Councillor Shaw next. Lynne?
Thank you, convenor. You may have actually picked me to it because I was doing a Fraser. I was going down memory lane and remembering the days when I was involved with the Arnotts building from my surveying days. And it was always really frustrating because for me, when you're inside that building now, it's been stripped. It would make incredible apartments and the Muddy Gate is proof with the gap site that there is an appetite for people to put apartments in the city centre. And it was really just the conversations that will be happening at officer level, as well as obviously your Scottish City Alliance level is, right, you've got this pension fund, you're waiting to pay rates on it now. But have you ever thought about converting it into something along the lines of accommodation? Because we need accommodation in the city centre to boost night time economy, et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks very much, Lynne. And I think that is the final comment on this item. So thanks for all your contributions and I will take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Cheers. Can we move on to the next item, please, Willie?
Okay, thanks. Item ten, before these amendments arrangements for free school meal holiday support. You'd ask to agree the recommendations.
Yeah, I think all members will certainly welcome the support that's been deployed to families across the city. And of course, we'll have to remember that these payments are made to the child. So there may be more than one child in each family, in which case it provides a fairly significant benefit as well. And it shouldn't be taken for granted. And of course, two pound forty over sixty-four days is a hundred and fifty-three pound of additional support at a time when many families need it. We know the impact of poverty generally in the city, but of course, the cost of living crisis is having a significant impact on every single one of our communities and will continue to do so, I think, over the coming months. And there's more work to be done on that front. But I think this is certainly a welcome amendment to those arrangements. It also ensures that we have expanded the eligibility criteria. So two hundred and twelve children will now benefit, not only that didn't benefit before, but from an increased provision in terms of that entitlement. So I think all of that taken on board, it's very welcome. And I'm sure members across the political spectrum will agree in that regard as well. So I think, Michael first?
Thank you, Conver. And yeah, I agree, we also welcome any expansion on school meal provision and support. And can I ask officers to update us on the position regarding universal free school meals for primary six and primary seven pupils that the Scottish government committed to? I think I'm right and think the deputy first minister said May that the full rollout would happen and last at the end of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, sorry. And will include primary six and seven pupils. I just want a bit of clarification on that and also secondary school provision, because there's been a deathly silence from government. So just anything from our officers that could clarify primary six and primary seven school meal provision?
Yeah, I'll ask officers to come in in just a second. I think it's worth saying that obviously, there's been a hell of a lot of work that's been undertaken in recent years to continue that expansion and support within our schools for the uptake of free school meals. So I think there's two things that are really important to reference, not just the expansion but the uptake. And I know that officers have also been doing a sterling amount of work across both the city and the region and Tayside contracts to increase the uptake of free school meals to support families across our communities as well. Audrey, I can see you on my screen. So can I perhaps come to you in the first instance to offer some comment on that? Thank you.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks for the question, councillor Triton. Yeah, probably don't have an exact update on the commitment to expand primary six and seven. There's certainly been a bit of delay in that and a lot of that's been around capital works that needs to be done to expand the facilities in some of our kitchens and our dining spaces in our schools. So the commitment is still there for that to be in place by the end of this programme for government. But there's certainly been a delay of a couple of years. So it's ongoing discussions, but I don't have an exact date for you. But I'll certainly see if there's any further updates I can share with yourself and the rest of our members on committee that I don't have right in front of me just now. In terms of uptake of free school meals, it's something that we have a lot of discussions around, especially with our partners in Tayside contracts and also with colleagues in health, as we look at child health away and all sorts of other aspects of trying to encourage our young people and our children to take up the meal that's there for them. And a lot of work with parents through our parent council chairs and so on. So we'll continue to really push the agenda around and to listen to people's feedback in order to, you know, encourage our colleagues in particular, provide the meals at Tayside contracts to look at what changes can be made to allow more of an uptake because our children, our young people are really satisfied with the meals that are coming and also for parents to be satisfied that if they send their children or their younger adults to school meals, that they'll get a good meal and that it'll be good value for money and that the young people will enjoy it. So it's an ongoing debate. We use our pupil councils in schools as well to give us feedback on a regular basis. But it's something that we're really pushing hard on and we see opportunities all the time to get feedback from young people in particular to feed into that process. So it's something that we are constantly looking at because in the times of, you know, real challenges, cost of living challenges for many families, we would always want them to take up anything that they can, they're entitled to have. And but sometimes sadly, they don't do that. So we're continually having these discussions. I hope that helps.
Thanks very much, Audrey. And obviously, it's an incredible policy in terms of the rollout and the support that it delivers for families in addition to free school meal payments during the holidays, which is the item that's before us. And obviously, the announcement earlier in this year that the expansion of primary six and seven would be undertaken by twenty twenty-four and the ongoing conversation via COSL as well. I'll just check in with Robert before I move on to the next question. If there's any update from his perspective in terms of the discussions he'll be involved in at a national level as well. Robert?
Thank you, convenor. No, I've not got any update. My understanding is we're working towards twenty twenty-four. But if there's any update, I'm happy to share. I'm not aware of any specific additional information on funding, which I guess is where you're coming from, convenor.
Can I come in for a quick comment?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, John. No, it's seriously, it's not a partisan point. It's we as a group believe invest in young people. The stats invest in young people, especially at school with a meal in their bellies and the outcomes. It's just black and white, it's seriously. So it's something we care about as a group. And if Mrs. May and the team can update us, that'd be great. And I know Bailey McPherson is trying the school meals on Friday, the quality, so I shall hear back from him regarding the quality of the meal.
Yep, happy to bring my two children along to any meeting if anybody wants to hear a real first world example as well. Because they do speak very highly mostly of the dishes. But thank you very much for the question. Georgia?
Thank you, convenor. I'd like to stop. I welcome in the decision to expand eligibility for free school meals to include primary four and five pupils who receive the clothing grant. This is a positive step for families, especially during a cost of living crisis. But there's one query I have and that is that the total additional funding the council will receive from the Scottish government is eight hundred and ninety K. When the meals are taken, it costs two pounds forty each. This leaves around eight K spare, which is useful in case any more children become eligible. But on page one hundred and forty, four point ten, references meals at two pound fifty, which would overstep the budget by almost thirty K. And maybe this is just a mistake, but can officers please clarify this discrepancy within the report? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'll bring in Jackie in a moment just to say, so the proposal is two pound forty, of course. I think that the reference to two pound fifty was giving an illustration of if the payment became two pound fifty, the impact from a financial point of view on the overall budget would mean that it would outstrip. So the proposal is very much within the budget. It will benefit the number of children that I said earlier in terms of that additional two hundred and twelve. But Jackie, do you want to just come in and give a professional opinion to reassure elected members rather than me trying to do so?
You've done it perfectly there. That's exactly what the four point ten is trying to say out. That we, as a councillor, our budget doesn't reach to two pounds fifty per day, but we can afford to give two pounds forty per day for each child, which is an increase from what we're currently doing, as well as the expansion of pupils.
Thanks, Jackie. You happy with that, Georgia?
Yeah, thanks for that. I thought maybe it was just a typical graphical error or something. Because I was working out in my calculator and I couldn't, I couldn't work out the second bit. So yeah, okay.
Nobody's. Thank you. And Dorothy for the final contribution?
Just to make a comment, I was fortunate to attend Cleopatra Castle Primary School and enjoy a lunch with the children. It was excellent quality, absolutely delicious. And the presentation was really very good. And a charming bunch of young people who helped me out of my little dining chair, which was a bit low to the ground. So but the food was excellent and I would recommend any councillor to go along and try a school lunch.
Pleased to hear it, Dorothy. And I think that's also good warning for everybody else that might go visit in the future to not sit in the very small chairs but seek a larger one. But thank you for that contribution. And I see nobody else wanting to come in at this point. So can we take this as agrees, please? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. It takes me on to item eleven, IT service management system. You'd ask to agree the proposals?
Self-explanatory. Any questions? Nope. Please don't jump off after this item because remember, we do have to go back to one further item. So can I take this as agreed? Grand. Thank you. That concludes city governments, but I'll hand you back to Roger.
Thank you, convenor. The final committee this evening is the neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee.
Yeah, thank you, Elaine. Just crack on, please.
Thank you, convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Bailey Dawson?
Thanks, convenor. Similar to the Fleming Cross item, OVO are my employer. So non-financial interest, please.
Thank you. Noted. I see no others. So just move on, Elaine, please.
Thank you, convenor. Item two, tenders received by head of housing and construction, and this is for approval.
Yeah, thanks. Continuing on from the successful EWI programme so far with over five and a half thousand homes and residents benefiting from the EWI has been fitted already. This is a tender for an additional three hundred and four in the Cuppen Road, Fleming Gardens, Arkle Street and Cuppen Road area. Any questions or comments? The longest name in the committee, but the fastest committee ever. So thank you very much. We'll take that as agreed and good night, everyone. That's the end of the business for. I'll even name it. Okay, thank you. Thanks.